All right, welcome. It's 5 o'clock, January 22nd, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the City of Cape Girardeau City Council. Thank you all for being here tonight. We will start with the invocation by Deacon Mark Kiplinger in, from Cape Girardeau, and then follow that with the pledge of allegiance. So if you all would please rise and join us for that.
Thank you, Mayor Kinder. We bow our heads. Father God, we are midway through this week, especially dedicated each year to prayer for Christian unity. We pray, oh Lord, to help all Christian churches and really all people to seek common ground and appreciation for one another. This year's theme comes from the Gospel of St. Luke, Chapter 10, verse 27. Jesus said, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your being, with all your strength, with all your mind, and your neighbor as yourself." Father God, as our city leaders gather tonight, we ask you, send your Holy Spirit to guide them, help them lead our community to continue working for unity and in finding the common ground in which to build upon. We thank you for calling them to serve our community and ask your blessing upon them and our city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have no study sessions tonight. We do have one presentation, and that is the recognition of Eric Foster for his retirement from the Public Works Department. If Eric is here and would join me, yes. Tonight, we recognize Eric Foster for his over 23 years of service to the citizens of Cape Girardeau. Is it Eric or?
It's Erie.
Erie, it sure is. Well, I didn't have my glasses on earlier. I thought I was asleep, so now I'm, okay. I'm Erie. Please forgive me. All right. Erie, all right. He began his work at the Public Works as a mechanic one on September 25th, 2000, was promoted to mechanic two on September 25th of 2001, and became our senior mechanic on March 20th of 2023. He has maintained several automotive service excellence certifications throughout the years, and is EPA certified for refrigerant recovery and recycling. Erie's primary works with the city's small engine equipment and tires. He primarily works with those, and his attention to detail has made him a valuable employee in this area. He is creative and thinks outside the box on ways to best use the city's resources. Sometimes parts become unavailable for our older equipment. Erie has often designed new parts and uses welding skills to fabricate them. He will do whatever it takes to get the job done. When we were having trouble with the tires overheating on our automated trucks, Erie found high-pressure valve stems that greatly reduced the failure rate. Erie was always willing to help wherever he is needed. He's very dedicated, responding to 24 winter seasons worth of snow events, changing out parts on frozen equipment, and sometimes going into the field to fix something that's broken down. We will miss Erie's ideas and skills, but wish him a long and happy retirement. Congratulations. The City of Cape Girardeau, so that was true. Would you like to say it?
Oh.
You sound like a doer, so, well, you do. You've got important things to say. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're spending more money on over plaques, so we got a good deal.
That was beautiful.
Yeah, that's really good.
That was really nice.
Yeah, that's the first one.
Yeah. And Erie, if you want to begin your retirement now and sneak out of here, you're certainly welcome to. You do not have to stay, but we welcome you if you'd like to stay as well, so. All right. Council, any communications or reports? Start down here.
I'm just gonna jump in and kind of continuing off of Public Works theme. I want to thank all the city staff in the Public Works, especially during all this inclement weather, just everything that everyone's been doing to help keep the streets clean, salt the roads, keep sidewalks passable, has really been incredible. Missouri gets really strange weather, and as we can all, we can all agree to that, this past couple of weeks with the super cold and the snow and ice and the sleet and the freezing rain, all of it. Thank you, guys, everybody that works with that in those departments. It is, your work is invaluable to the city. Another thing I just wanted to point out is I just wanted to encourage anybody in Cape Girardeau that's just going for a Sunday drive, if you go into Ward One on North Main Street, I want everybody to take a moment and drive past the Life House Building that is under construction between downtown and the casino, right on North Main Street. As this building continues to be built, it is striking. It is an architecturally striking building. There's a lot of really unique lines and use of brick and other things. And so if anybody's out for a drive, just drive past that Life House Building in Ward One, because it really is a beautiful structure. It's going to be a unique addition to the City of Cape Girardeau, and I just thought the citizens would be interested to drive past it and see it. So, other than that, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Anyone?
Sure. I just wanted to mention this past Saturday, Porch had their open house at their property on South Pacific. It was just an amazing transformation in the renovation from before and after, got to meet a lot of residents in the community, and nothing but praise all around. So, Councilwoman Randall, thank you so much. It really shows the amount of work and effort that Porch has made to South Side Cape. I also want, I also wanted to thank Salvation Army for opening their warming shelter during the emergency cold weather this past week. I'm not sure the amount of numbers that were housed overnight, but I know there was around, in the twenties around the first or second day. I hope to hear some more about the numbers throughout the week. And also, are we now using an officer in the Salvation Army's building as a substation? Is that true? We do have, okay. We now have one of our officers at the Salvation Army during the day, serving as our police substation until we can get the other building up and running. So that is a huge improvement in the center part of the city. So thank you very much to staff for doing that and the police department.
Great. Anybody else? No? I'll just add that this Thursday at the Shawnee Center, CEMPO, which is our regional transportation organization, will be hosting an open house for people to come, submit thoughts and concerns and ideas for safe streets and mobility issues. From four to six, that'll be happening at the Shawnee Center. So CEMPO is putting that plan together and looking for public input. You can also go to CEMPO's website and do an online, give some input online if you wish to do that, but that'll be happening Thursday afternoon at the Shawnee Center. All right, moving on, we have several items for discussion. First, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to appear as an advisory board applicant? If so, you may come forward. No? All right. Next, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry. If you would come to the podium and give us your name and address and tell us about yourself.
Good evening. So I'm Jennifer Bankin. I live on 1969 Randall, but I work as the Community Forester for the Missouri Department of Conservation, and I have served with the chairman as the Cape Tree Board for the last, I think, six years, and so I'm up for reappointment. So I'm just here to present myself and say that it's been a great privilege, and I've had a really good time working with this group. I feel like we've had some really great discussions. There's a lot of really good moving parts when it comes to tree care and management. I know that also falls on your plates quite often when you're trying to talk about development and engineering and safety considerations within the city. And so as the board chairman, it's been, like I said, it's been my pleasure to be able to work with the group and try to help guide those managements for tree care and preservation, and be a champion for Tree City USA status and everything that comes with that. So here I am today, just to say thanks, and hopefully I'll continue on.
Okay. Thanks. Any questions for Jennifer? All right, well, thank you so much. Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have a report from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, Mayor, and Dr. Haskins and Council. The last planning and zoning meeting was January the 10th, and the first item was our, your finance director Lisa Mills came and gave us a, she presented the draft 2024 to 2029 capital improvement program, and the commission recommended approval of that program, and it was a unanimous vote. Next on the agenda was the address 1507 Independence Street rezoning. The request was to rezone property from M1, which is Light Manufacturing Industrial District, to C2 Highway Commercial District. The recommendation by city staff was for approval, and the vote was six in favor, none in opposition, one did abstain. 724 Broadway Fence Exception. The request was to install a six-foot-high black metal picket fence with gates along Broadway and a six-foot-high chain-link fence around the rest of the property. The recommendation by city staff was to approve, and it was unanimous, seven voted in favor of that exception. Next item was for Lone Star Industries Land Subdivision Record Plat. The Lone Star is purchasing 100 acres from the Hunsey Family Trust along South Sprig Street, and the city staff recommended approval. It was, the vote was seven in favor, none in opposition, and none abstained. Next item was the Riverview Gardens Number Three Subdivision Record Plat. The plat subdivided a lot to create two new lots at 45 Rivercrest Drive, and city staff recommended approval, and the vote was seven in favor, none opposed, and none abstained. The next item was the Younger Subdivision Record Plat. I see Mr. Younger in the audience. The plat combines two lots at 2544 and 2550 Revolution Drive. City staff recommended approval, seven votes in favor, none opposed, and zero abstain. And finally, the Renns Subdivision Record Plat. The plat combined two lots at 241 and 251 Orange Bowl Drive. City staff recommended that for approval, seven in favor, none opposed, and none abstained. So that was all the business at the meeting. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions?
Thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grazer. Next, we'll have a consent agenda review. Dr. Haskin.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we added nine, 10, 11, and 12. We have a couple of agreements and two grants that we'd like for you to consider for this afternoon. The first one is the agreement with Crawford Murphy &amp; Tilly for design bill phase for taxiway DE and F reconstruction out at the airport. And of course, number 10, we have a general services agreement with Bacon Farmer and Workman for engineering and testing. We've got a lot of projects that we need to get off and running, and hopefully these guys will be able to help us engineer these projects so we can get going. And number 11, we have a highway transportation safety reimbursement grant through DWI Enforcement. And of course, finally, number 12, we have another highway safety transportation reimbursement grant, HMV Enforcement. Mayor, that concludes the consent review.
Thank you. We'll move into regular session. Ms. Conrad, if you would, please do the roll call.
Mr. Bliss?
Here.
Mr. Gard, absent. Mayor Kinder?
Here.
Mr. Presson?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Chuxel?
Here.
All right, thank you. Council, there's an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So I move.
Second.
Mr. Presson, Ms. Randall, any discussion? All right, hearing them then, all in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right. That agenda carries. We don't have any public hearings tonight. We do have a consent agenda. Mr. Young, would you please read that over?
Bill 2404, Norton and San Anson Land Located at 3101 County Road 620 in the city limits to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2404, Norton and San Anson Land Located at 3101 County Road 620 in the city limits to the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2405, in ordinance submitting chapter 30 of code of ordinance to city Cape Girardeau, Missouri by zoning newly annexed property located 3101 County Road 620 as R1 single-family suburban residential district. Bill 2405, in ordinance submitting chapter 30 of code of ordinance to city Cape Girardeau, Missouri by zoning newly annexed property located 3101 County Road 620 as R1 single-family suburban residential district. Bill 2406, in ordinance extending the boundaries of Ward Four to include new property newly annexed into the city limits of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2406, in ordinance extending the boundaries of Ward Four to include property newly annexed into the city limits of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2407, in ordinance approving the record plat of Dodd subdivision. Bill 2407, in ordinance approving the record plat of Dodd subdivision. Bill 2408, in ordinance approving the record plat of EOC Second Subdivision. Bill 2408, in ordinance approving the record plat of EOC Second Subdivision. Bill 2409, in ordinance accepting a permanent fiber optic easement from the Cape Girardeau Public School District for property located at 1920 Whitener Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2409, in ordinance accepting a permanent fiber optic easement from the Cape Girardeau School District for property located at 1920 Whitener Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2410, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an aviation project consultant agreement with Crawford Murphy &amp; Tilly, Inc. for design and bidding phase services for taxiway reconstruction at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Bill 2411, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing, Inc. Bill 2412, a resolution authorizing an application to mode out for the Highway Safety Enforcement Grant for DWI Enforcement and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary grant documents. Bill 2413, a resolution authorizing an application to mode out for a Highway Safety Program Grant for hazardous moving violation enforcement and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary grant documents.
All right, thank you, Mr. Young. Council, we have a consent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So I'll move. Second.
Mr. Bliss, Mr. Thomas, any further discussion? All in favor, then, of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That agenda carries. Nothing was removed from the consent agenda. We have several new ordinances. As always, we'll have a staff member describe the ordinance, and at that time, if there's anyone in the public who wishes to make a comment or pose a question, you can come to the podium and state your name and residence and have up to three minutes to make a comment. After that, the council will take the item up. So first, we have Bill 2414, in ordinance approving the record platte of Lone Star Industries, Inc., land subdivision. This is the first reading. Mr. Polley.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Haskin, Council. This is an ordinance to approve a record platte submitted for Lone Star Industries, Inc., land subdivision located on South Sprague Street in Cape Girardeau. This was submitted to planning and zoning on January 10, 2024, with the seven to zero approval vote.
Anyone in the audience wishing to appear? No? All right. Seeing no one, then. Council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2414?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Thomas, Ms. Randall, any further discussion from the council? No? All right. All then in favor of Bill 2414, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have Bill 2415, in ordinance approving the record platte of Riverview Gardens Number Three. This is the first reading. Mr. Polley.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a record platte that has been submitted by the Riverview Garden Number Three located at 45 Rivercrest Drive. It's zoned R2. The platte subdivides a lot, which creates two new lots. This was submitted to planning and zoning on January 10 with their approval of seven to zero. Staff recommends.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to appear for this issue? No? Hearing none, then. Council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2415?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Presson, Ms. Chuxel, any further discussion? All right. All in favor, then, of Bill 2415, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And lastly, we have Bill 2416, in ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a lighting agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for intersection improvements at Route 74 Shawnee Parkway and Minnesota Avenue in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. This is the first reading.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a lighting maintenance agreement between the city of Cape Girardeau and Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission, designating the maintenance responsibilities for the intersection of Minnesota Avenue and Highway 74, which consists of two lights. We already maintain all the other ones in the area. We added two new lights to that intersection.
Great. Anyone in the audience wishing to appear for this issue? All right, seeing none. Council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2416?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Bliss, Mr. Thomas, any further discussion? All right. All in favor, then, of Bill 2416, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We have, thank you, Mr. Polley. We have two appointments to make tonight. First is the appointment to the Silver Springs Community Improvement District Board of Directors. That board has put forth Grayson Earlbacher as their selection for that board. Is there a motion to approve Grayson Earlbacher?
So moved.
Mr. Presson?
Second.
Mr. Thomas, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, then, of Grayson Earlbacher to the Silver Springs CID Board of Directors, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations. And then, lastly, we have two appointments to the Tree Board. Council selections were Jennifer Benkin and Angela Wilson. Is there a motion to approve those two people to the Tree Board?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Thomas, Ms. Chuxel, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, then, of Jennifer Benkin and Angela Wilson to the Tree Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations to all of them. Under other business, we had one person register to speak tonight, Lisa Green. Is Lisa here? Okay. She is not here, then. That then concludes our meeting for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Randall, Mr. Presson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time tonight.